Do I have a motion to reconvene in open session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The board is now in open session. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution certifying the closed session?
Now therefore be it resolved that the school board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Cooker.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the first personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/62-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Cooker.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the next personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/63-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Cooker.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the next personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/64-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Cooker.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the next personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/65-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Cooker.
Aye. The motion carries. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the June 3, 2025, School Board Business Meeting to order. Before we begin the meeting this evening, I would like to thank everyone for attending the June 3 School Board Business Meeting and remind the audience that comments to this board may only be made at the podium during the public comment period. Comments from the audience are prohibited and in violation of Section 18.2-415 of the Code of Virginia, Disorderly Conduct in Public Places, and School Board Policy 6141. I appreciate everyone's patience and understanding so that we can conduct the business meeting in an orderly fashion. We will now have an invocation by Mrs. Hudgens, followed by the flag salute led by Mrs. Heffron.
Before tonight's invocation, we want to remember the retiree, Thomas Williams, who died last month at the age of 75. Mr. Williams worked for 31 years for Chesterfield County Public Schools, beginning as a custodian and advancing to become a team leader. Please join us in a moment of silence in his memory. Dear Lord, we come before you today with open hearts, seeking to embody your spirit of compassion and care. As we make decisions that impact the lives of our students, families, and educators, may we always do so with empathy, understanding, and wisdom. Let our community be a beacon of compassion where everyone feels valued and cared for. In your name we pray, amen.
At this time, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's consent agenda includes: Agenda adoption, approval of the minutes from May 13, 2025 work session, May 13, 2025 business meeting, Memo Number 081-25: Recommended Personnel Actions, Memo Number 082-25: Acceptance of New Grants, Memo Number 083-25: Approval of the FY 2026 Internal Audit Plan, Memo Number 084-25: Adoption of the 2026-2027 CCPS School Calendar, Memo Number 085-25: Approval of Federal Entitlement Programs, Memo Number 086-25: CTE Revisions to Program of Studies, Memo Number 087-25: Approval of the 2025-26 Head Start Application, Memo Number 088-25: FY 2025 Transfer Across Appropriations Categories, Memo Number 067-25: Revisions to the School Board Code of Conduct and Governance Handbook, Memo Number 089-25: Appointment and Reappointment of Members to School Board Advisory Committees, and Memo Number 099-25: Employee Appointment List. Are there any additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I believe we'd like to move Memo Number 091-25: Recognition of Kristi Ellis to below Memo 094-25: Recognition of Outstanding Food Service Employees.
Thank you. Are there any requests from a school board member to separate an item from the consent agenda for discussion and individual action? Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Cooker.
Aye. The motion carries. Mr. Smith, would you please announce our new administrators?
If I could ask Reed Wodoka to come forward this time? Board members, with your action this evening, you have approved Reed Wodoka as a Chief Operations Officer effective July 1, 2025. Reed's education experience includes a Master's of Education, Executive Masters in Cities, Doctor of Education, Public Policy, a Master's of Public Administration, and a Bachelor of Science in Public Policy and Administration. He is currently serving as a Deputy Superintendent for Operations and Strategic Planning for Lynchburg City Schools. He also has experience serving as a Deputy City Manager, Deputy County Administrator, and Town Manager. Please show me congratulating and welcoming Reed.
Next, we have awards and recognitions, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask Martine Gonzalez to come forward this time? Tonight, we recognize Martine Gonzalez, the owner of La Milpa Restaurant. In 2000, Martine launched La Milpa with a vision of sharing delicious cuisine and cultural experiences. He's forged strong connections with Chesterfield County Public Schools, and his partnerships with our schools bring vibrant presentations to life, showcasing traditions like the Day of the Dead and captivating performances by Aztec dancers. During school visits, Martine actively engages students with hands-on food preparation, using vegetables grown on his own farm, generously donates dishes from La Milpa, and demonstrates art along the way. Martine is also an alumni of the CCPS Learning with You program and has served on the school board's Environmental Scholarship Advisory Committee. Please show me in thanking and welcoming this evening Martine Gonzalez.
So, congratulations for being absolutely amazing. He's incredible, and so I have a little email, but I'm trying to remember it. It's the list of things that this, I was like, why? I want to know what's great about this person, and the list just goes on and on and on. He pours back into our schools in a way that is unparalleled. It is amazing. So you brought our, Mary, you brought dancers to our dance program. You brought our students to your farm where you, it's amazing. I mean, and you raise all of your food, your, well, not the meats, but the vegetables and...
Yes, we grow part of the produce we use in the kitchen at the restaurant so we can experience better flavors in the area. Yes.
And the watering system.
Yes. We collect rainwater and all that. Yeah. We try to make it the best possible and make it like a real thing going on in the area.
Right, right.
It's working pretty good.
Right. Well, he's also a part of an advisory board, which takes a lot of time. And so this is someone who, he is a local, you get to put this out front, it is gorgeous, and we're all better together, and we're better with you, sir. But what you do, we are so appreciative of it, and we honor you, and we thank you for being a trailblazer for the businesses in the locality. So thank you so much. Give him another hand. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Also, his food is really great, so let's go visit.
Next, we have Memo Number 092-25: Recognition of Josh Davis, Dr. Murray.
Well, he knows the routine. Josh, get on up here. Before Chief Operations Officer Josh Davis retires later this month, we want to express our appreciation and gratitude to him. Josh earned his Bachelor's Degree in Civil Engineering from MIT and a Master's Degree in Civil Engineering from the University of Virginia. He worked for 21 years as a civilian employee with the Department of the Army, beginning in Newport News with the U.S. Army Surface Deployment and Distribution Command, then advancing to jobs at the Pentagon and at Fort Belvoir. He retired from civil service in 2009. Josh next moved into public education, working first for Alamooral County Public Schools and then for Henrico before joining the right team here in Chesterfield County as Chief Operations Officer in March of 2020. His background as a civil engineer with extensive logistics experience provided an invaluable approach to school operations, which covered facilities, maintenance, construction, transportation, planning, and safety. Josh helped guide CCPS through the upheaval of COVID-19, a serious shortage of bus drivers, construction of a dozen new school buildings, revitalization of the major maintenance program, and planning for additional schools. Josh dedicated time to understanding the needs of schools and strengthening relationships throughout Chesterfield County Public Schools and Chesterfield County Government. When he retires July 1, Chesterfield County Public Schools will miss his skilled and far-reaching presence. Congratulations and best wishes, friend, in retirement to you, Chief Operations Officer Josh Davis. Well done.
So we, I drew the best straw so that I could be here because we were fighting for this right here. But my first time meeting Josh, I think that's why I got the long straw, is as a parent. So I sat where you are, and I came to this microphone, and I was advocating for some things in my district that I didn't see happening in the Dale District. And normally, you don't get responses back from the board, which is protocol, right? But Josh stopped me on one of the many times that I came asking for something in my district, and he explained it to me. He took the time to educate a parent on what I needed to do if I really wanted to see some change happen in my district. He explained how the numbers come from, who I need to talk to, who I need to send the email to, and he took that time to tell me that after a late night in this room, which goes to show his dedication to the community and not just the board. So I appreciated that relationship that we started when I was just a parent, and it continued on, and I appreciate the advocacy that you've done for all of us, especially for Dale, for the things that we have to come, and I really appreciate you. And we both retired at the same time. I wore a uniform in the Pentagon, and I finished my civilian service up there just a few months ago. So we are connected that way for the Department of the Army. So from one soldier to a civilian, I appreciate everything you've done for our country.
Thank you, Ms. Chatters. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve this community, this school district, the students of the district, and the families. And reaching across the aisle to the county government has been very important. I'm glad that I've had a bit of success with that and it's really just come to benefit CCPS by developing those relationships. I tell people when they ask about my job, I said, "The blood is pumping every day." I just told Reed that, and he's certainly going to find that out, too. Looking forward to observing his success from afar. But we have accomplished a lot. You know, remarking about COVID, that was a tough baptism by fire. Bob Meister and I appeared on March 2, and we closed school the following Friday. And so there were so many challenges that were unanticipated, but we worked together. We had supportive school board at that time. We have one still now. I just want to thank everybody on my teams, construction, facilities maintenance, transportation, planning, safety, and security, because you're only as good as the people that work with you every day, and they are dynamite, from the bus drivers to the custodians, all the way up to the leaders and directors that I get to talk to every day. So without further ado, farewell.
Next, we have recognition of outstanding driver performance, Dr. Fry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members. Mr. Roberts, it's my pleasure this evening to present to you our Drivers of the Month. There were many bus drivers that could be recognized this month, but each transportation area manager had to make the tough decision of selecting just one from each area that exemplified excellence and dedication to represent their area. We'd like to recognize and honor the following drivers. Jasmine Capers, Area 1, Bus 793, three years of service. Jasmine says she tries to make each day count because she is the first and last person the children see and talk to. Jennifer Tolentino, Area 2, Bus 143, one year of service. Jennifer says, "As the captain of Bus 143, I love my job because I am part of the community, enjoy being a role model, and really love hearing what students have to say." Hope Jones, Area 3, Bus 824, 18 years of service. Hope says she loves being a bus driver because she loves children and enjoys the schedule. The children make her day, and she builds relationships with students that she never forgets. That's what keeps her going. Chrissy Manfield, Area 4, Bus 509, two years of service. Chrissy is a great asset to team transportation. She is always willing to help anyone who needs it. As a mentor, Chrissy also teaches our newest drivers all the ways of CCPS transportation. Corey Paul, Area 5, Bus 206, two years of service. Corey says, "I love having a job where I can see the impact my work has on students and their families. I enjoy doing work that makes a difference in my community." Congratulations.
I think it was said, and I apologize, I'm not sure who it was, that you are the first and you're the last that our students see. And you represent Chesterfield County Public Schools, right? That is extremely important, and I think an honor that when the kids are coming onto your bus, right? It's your territory, it's your bus, right? We know that. But you are just taking that boundary and extending it out when you are interpersonal and when you are gaining the relationships with those students, which I also heard commented tonight as well. So on behalf of the Chesterfield County School Board, thank you so very much for what you do on a daily basis because I know at times it is stressful and not easy, but other times, it's a piece of cake. And it ebbs and flows, I'm sure, as the days and weeks go on. But we would not be as successful in teaching our students if we didn't have the transportation team that we have supporting us to make that happen. And that is a great credit to each and every one of you. So just a few words, if you like. I always ask a question, but you don't have to ask that, answer the question. If you just want to say something on your own, you're more than welcome to. But I'm always curious, what is it about the students, you transporting them, that gets you excited to come back the next day?
So I'm Corey's supervisor. I would say that she enjoys working with our students and the relationship that she has with each and every one of them.
Good evening. I would say that meeting different students and seeing all their different personalities and really seeing children grow through the years is really, really special. And seeing them all crying last Friday. I know a lot of us had tears in our eyes, too.
I would say that some children are just perfect angels, and some of them need a little extra work, and it is a challenge. And I love that challenge to see them change. That's what keeps me going.
I would say being able to help the Spanish community people, the Spanish-speaking students, they feel comfortable being able to communicate with me. I would love to. I love doing that.
And I would say being the kid's counselor because they come to me with everything. So that's very entertaining, and I enjoy it.
And again, thank you so much for what you do on a daily basis. Yeah, please, thank you.
Next, we have recognition of outstanding food service employees, Mr. Dunbrack.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Murray, Mr. Roberts. Thank you as always for the opportunity to recognize some of our outstanding Food Nutrition Services team members. The end of an academic year is always a unique time for our Food Nutrition Services team. While many of our staff have a last day of school mentality, that means the end of their contract year and the beginning of a summer vacation. For many others, it's simply another Friday. We have team members working this week to feed the students attending Camp Epic at our technical centers. We have others preparing for the first meal service at the Chesterfield Farmers Market beginning tomorrow. And we have 31 managers in our office today completing their training and preparations for summer school beginning later this month. We're so fortunate to have dedicated individuals that understand that hunger never takes a vacation. This evening, three of our honorees were able to join us. Unable to join us this evening, first was Tina Wilson. Ms. Wilson is the Assistant Manager at Etchik Elementary School and has been with the county for one year and says, "I really enjoy being the one to put a smile on a child's face. For some children, it may be the only smile they get, the only meal they receive, and I feel good knowing that I'm the one that helped to provide that full tummy and that smile." Also unable to join us this evening is Austin Ribison. Mr. Ribison is a food service associate at Manchester High School and has been with the county for one year. He says, "I'm a Chesterfield native, having grown up in the area. I love my job and giving back to the community and seeing smiles on the students' faces when serving them lunch." Next, we have Teresa Shamberger. Ms. Shamberger is a food service associate at Hopkins Road Elementary School. She's been with the county for seven years. She says, "I like being able to make a difference in children's lives and being able to put a smile on their face." Next, we have Luz Barajas Pinheta. Ms. Pinheta is a food service associate at Providence Middle School and has been with us for one year. She says, "I like the school environment, preparing food for the children because it brings me beautiful memories of my old job in my country." And finally, we have Alima Tu Hay. Ms. Hay is a food service associate at James River High School and has been with the county for one year. She says, "What I like best about my job is the teamwork and the kids that I get to serve every day. I love to cook, but even more, I love the kids."
Okay, thank you. One of the things that I noticed in what everyone said was a smile. You guys put smiles on our kids' faces and food in their belly, and that is incredible. So we appreciate the love and the care. I heard a lot about cooking. Like, somebody said, "I love to cook and I love to talk to the kids." So I just really appreciate you guys taking care of our kids. You know, lunch is a time when they can just be themselves and be, you know, just be free for a minute. And so you all help them do that, and you give them yummy food, and we really, really appreciate everything that you do. And congratulations for being incredible ambassadors for Chesterfield County. Do either of you want to say a little something about? Okay, well, thank you so much. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Next, we have recognition of Kristi Ellis by Dr. Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask Kristi Ellis to join us up front? Before Manchester High School Principal Kristi Ellis retires at the end of this month, we want to express our appreciation and gratitude to her. And making this extra special for me as a former Lancer myself, what an honor it is to celebrate you tonight, Kristi. After graduating from Duke University, Kristi taught preschool in North Carolina for two years before realizing that wasn't for her probably and joining Manchester High School as an English teacher. For the next 13 years, she was an outstanding teacher and debate coach. Kristi was named the Dominion District Debate Coach of the Year in 2000 and in 2003. She was selected as Manchester High's Teacher of the Year in 2002 and attained National Board Certification in 2005. Moving forward in her career at Manchester, Kristi served as Dean of Students for three years, then Assistant Principal for six. In 2016, she was named Principal and has served for nine years in that role. That's a total of 31 years teaching and leading at Manchester High School. But those are not the only years that connect Kristi to Manchester. She also graduated from Manchester High School, which truly makes her a Lancer for life. Kristi's career demonstrates her belief in the power of education to unlock opportunities and transform lives. She made her mark at Manchester High as a top-tier student, talented educator, and strong leader. When she retires at the end of June, Chesterfield County Public Schools will miss her dedicated daily presence. Congratulations and best wishes in retirement to Manchester High School Principal Kristi Ellis.
This is for you. Absolutely. And being in my district, when I first came on the board, I went around to all the schools, met all the principals, and got a better understanding behind the curtain, if you will. And I remember our conversation. I don't know if you recall our conversation. I don't know if you recall our conversation. Walked into your office and you said, "Make yourself at home," which was a mistake. Kicked my shoes off, put my feet up. I'm kidding, I didn't do that. But it was so easy talking with you. And you made me feel like this was just another day and everything's going to be good. And you gave me your phone number, said, "Hey, if anything comes up, feel free to give me a call." And I've called you on numerous occasions, and you're very quick to respond and explain what's going on and why. And I greatly appreciate that about you. I see that side. I can only imagine what all of the students see as they have been around you, taught by you, under your administration. And little side note, and I hope you're okay with this. Mrs. Ellis's husband is a teacher at Cosby High School. And my son has the privilege of being in his theater production class. He comes home and talks very highly of him. And I said, "Yeah, that makes sense," because I know his wife. And you get both from either one, right? The amount of people, when you're, when you announce your retirement, that have reached out speaks volumes to what you do on a daily basis for Chesterfield County Public Schools. I thought the news did a great piece on you, and I know that made you a little uncomfortable being in the camera. But it's not every day we get to celebrate, truly, a Lancer for Life graduate, as Dr. Murray said, coming back and then teaching and being a principal and leading by example. So on behalf of the Chesterfield County School Board and all the Lancers for Life, thank you.
I will be very brief, because they've said a lot already. But it has been my privilege and my honor to serve the Manchester community. Truly, when I was a student, back in the dark ages now, and I moved from Cloverhill to Manchester, and I found the Manchester community at that time to be very welcoming and open and a place where you could be friends with anybody and it wasn't cliquey or judgmental. And there were tons of opportunities, like really anything that you're interested in. There was a club or a person or a sponsor that was there for it and would help you. And it has been my mission to try to keep that feeling going and make sure that every single student who comes through has a place and feels at home, has somebody who's in their corner. And it's been amazing. I've watched thousands of students grow up before my eyes and go from freshmen who don't know anything to, you know, wonderful, wonderful adults who are going on to do such creative, service-oriented things to help our world be a better place. So it has been a truly wonderful career and my honor to serve.
Next, we have public comment. For this meeting, citizens were given the option of submitting their comments online or in person. Comments submitted via the online form were sent to the board prior to the start of tonight's meeting, posted to the board doc site, and will be included in full as an addendum to the meeting minutes. In-person comments will be summarized by the board clerk and included in the official meeting minutes. Documents submitted along with in-person comments will, upon request, be distributed to the board, but not included as a part of the board's official minutes. Madam Clerk, would you please announce this evening's in-person speakers?
Madam Chair, we have two speakers this evening. They are Princess Smith and Erin Dilday. Each speaker will have four minutes to address the board. There's a timer set up on top of the podium that will turn green when you begin speaking, yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and red when your time has expired. As a reminder, no personal belongings, other than a cell phone and speaker notes are allowed at the podium. Please have your materials organized in a manner that as you arrive at the podium, you're prepared to start speaking. Please note that comments equivalent to campaigning for any public office are in violation of School Board Policy 1110 or prohibited. May we have Princess Smith?
Good evening, members of Chesterfield County School Board, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Princess Smith, and I live in Chesterfield County. My husband and I are proud parents of three young adults. All of them, as well as myself, graduated from Matoka High School. I stand before you today, not just as a parent, but also as a member of this community who deeply cares about the integrity of our educational system. I'm here to address the matter that has affected our students' achievements and the credibility of our school district, the repeated errors on graduation diplomas issued over the past two years. In May 2024, our son, who we're proud to say just completed his first year in college, was a senior at Matoka High School. While celebrating his academic accomplishments and admiring his advanced diploma, we noticed the school's name was misspelled. It was spelled as M-A-T-O-K-A instead of M-A-T-O-A-C-A. Due to my positive engagement with Matoka's Dedicated Guidance Department and administrative staff, I quickly began drafting an email to inform them of the error. However, I later noticed in my email inbox they had already addressed the issue. An email had been sent to parents notifying them of the mistake and outlining the steps of correction. I appreciated that prompt response and I understood how mistakes could be made. Now, last month, our youngest child, who'll be heading to college in the fall, graduated from Matoka High School. As a family, we were overjoyed, celebrating her academic achievements. Once again, while taking pictures and admiring her advanced diploma, we noticed that the year indicated was 2005 instead of 2025. Now, this absolutely killed a celebratory mood. What is shocking is students are expected to submit error-free essays, but it seems okay for the school district, not once, but twice, have errors on an important document. However, unlike students who have one to two weeks to submit a paper or essay, the school district has 365 days to prepare for this. When I graduated in 1997, even when our oldest daughter, recent college grad, graduated from Matoka in 2021, no errors were found on the diplomas. If there were, perhaps it was a student's name, but not something as glaring as the name of the school or the graduation year. Details that should be easily verified if the graduation template was proofread properly. These recurring errors are concerning. They diminish the significance of our students' accomplishments and raise questions about the quality control processes in place, plus the unnecessary added expense. I urge the school board to review and strengthen the processes for preparing and issuing diplomas to ensure such mistakes are prevented in the future. Thank you for your time and attention on this matter, and I look forward to your response and to seeing steps to uphold the integrity of our educational system.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. May we have Erin Dilday?
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Murray, senior staff. My name is Erin Dilday. I'm a resident of the Cloverhill District. I'm a parent of two children that attended middle and high school within the Matoka District, and I'm currently a fifth-grade teacher at an amazing elementary school in the Cloverhill District. This is the time of year when educators will reflect on what went well, what we need to do better. Moving forward with that, I've come to you with a glow and a grow for your consideration regarding PBIS. For those that don't know, PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, and it is considered best practice for creating safe, excuse me, positive, equitable schools where everyone feels successful and seen. A Tier 1 instruction will reach and impact 80% to 90% of the school population. It is universal, it is preventative and proactive. At the elementary level, we have worked hard with a vetted and purchased curriculum for many years, implementing the Tier 1 school-wide PBIS framework to fidelity. In every elementary school I have been in, there's public and student-facing signage and an entire culture and language demonstrating these school-wide expectations in all settings, ranging from classrooms, the lunchroom, bathroom, even the bus. As a fifth-grade teacher, I have seen the middle school administrators and counselors share their programs and expectations to their future students. It immediately creates a sense of community and identity. I'm glad to see them continue to build on the success established at the elementary level. This is my glow. My grow is that this can and should exist in every CCPS high school. Our high school students may be the oldest, but they're still students, majority are still children. However, their mistakes can carry big consequences for themselves and others. It is the world we live in. You recognize this with funding, excuse me, weapons detectors in every secondary school next year. Recently, my own child experienced a several-hour lockdown. It's kind of scary, very scary. Yesterday, I happened to be in a CCPS high school for professional development and didn't see any visible evidence of Tier 1 school-wide PBIS language. And with further inquiry with my child, several of their peers and other high school colleagues across multiple or different work sites, rather, it doesn't seem to be in place as it should to be effective. Upon investigation of our internal resources and the identified 15 elements of Tier 1 PBIS instruction, my particular child's high school probably, or is not, rather, currently meeting most of the fidelity check guiding questions. I would like for you to consider a school-wide Tier 1 PBIS program at the high school level that, again, is proactive and preventative in nature, fostering a sense of community and safety. The framework and staff are already in place. It cannot simply be a matrix on a piece of paper, nor just a committee of selected staff that may meet monthly with no wider implementation, and certainly not an expectation of individual educators to implement in a bubble. That is not effective. I'm sure there are challenges at the secondary level, such as the sheer size of the school, student body and staff, as well as establishing consistency of implementation. However, these can be overcome with selecting and utilizing a proven curriculum for direct instruction, engaging and involving the student body, utilizing existing staff, such as the Behavior Intervention Support Specialists, but mostly through strong and committed school leadership. As a parent that happens to be a teacher, I truly thank you for the consideration and your support for creating safe learning environments that foster positive behaviors, allowing students to achieve their best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dilday. Madam Chair, that concludes this evening's public comment. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have this evening's superintendent's report. Dr. Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first one highlights this year's Little Feet Meat events. Hundreds of Special Olympic athletes from grades pre-K through 5th thoroughly enjoyed this year's Little Feet Meats for Chesterfield County Public Schools. This video showcases the connections and happiness we saw at both James River and Matoka High Schools. These events build acceptance and inclusion and give students time to run, jump, throw, and have fun outdoors. Enjoy.
Little Feet Meat provides an opportunity for all preschool and elementary school students with developmental disabilities in Chesterfield County to showcase their skills and have fun. But more importantly, this event, like many others throughout the year, provides an outstanding opportunity to change the minds and attitudes of all of us about the abilities and persons with intellectual disabilities.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Board members, is there any discussion? Ms. Ephraim?
Thank you. This was my first Little Feet Meat that I've missed this year, and I think it just, it's such, it set the tone. It was worse for it. It's such an uplifting event that I'm really, I'm really sad that I missed it this year. But it's such an important program, and I thank you, Dr. Murray, for your support of Special Olympics and the unified program that we've been incorporating at a more broad scale. And as a parent of a former little feeder, meter, turned gold medalist Special Olympiad, I appreciate our commitment as a community to supporting these amazing, amazing young people. Thank you.
Mr. Pronto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And kudos to James River High School and Matoka High School for hosting this this year. I echo exactly the same sentiments. To see the, that video was great, but it didn't show what was really going on, which was our kids feeling that they belonged. And despite the adversity that they face, being able to participate. And the other side of that is their buddies that helped them out in the process. And so that growth and development of understanding that you can still do whatever it is you're wanting to do, even if you have whatever it might be, I think is a very powerful message that we're reminded of, I think, as adults. But having the Little Feet Meat, I think, helps cement that for our kids as well. So greatly appreciate Chesterfield County Public Schools and the leadership from staff and the high schools for making sure that this happens every year. This isn't just a one-off, this happens every year. So something we can hang our hat on, and it's one of those feel-good moments.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, just one more. I would be remiss if I didn't put in a plug for next weekend's Special Olympics Virginia Summer Games, which will be taking place at the University of Richmond campus. And there are opportunities to volunteer, or you can just come and cheer.
Thank you. Next presentation, Dr. Murray?
Madam Chair, the next presentation this evening is on the 2025 graduations from Dr. Merriman.
I didn't realize my heel height and body height put that wrong there for a moment. Good evening, Ms. Cooker, Ms. Hudgens, School Board members, Dr. Murray. I'm here just to take a brief moment to share thanks and thoughts regarding graduations for the Class of 2025. As you all know, since you all participate in each and every one of them, we were able to celebrate over 4,200 students as they graduated in the Class of 2025. Some students already entered the workforce or military and did not choose to walk across the stage. But all together, we have about 4,000 students who walked across stages at Virginia State University, Virginia Commonwealth University, and of course, at the Conference Center at CTC at Hull. And that began the week of May 19th. And we have senior class sizes ranging to over 600 at Cosby to 69 who walked at Carver CCA. So really, a broad range of class sizes, to say the least, including within those spaces. Stephen Hackett and his team helped 42 students to earn their GED this year and have them be able to get their, that type of diploma, as well as Scott Miles's team within the adult education has worked with 31 adult students to earn theirs, with a few more hopefully in the next week or two earning it also. Of course, I want to thank each and every one of you guys for attending these graduation ceremonies and also sharing words with our graduates. I know it's always important for our students to be... And then also, behind the scenes, transportation and facilities also make sure that our underclassmen's students participate and all their equipment make it there. We certainly could never do this type of event without them helping us. Robyn Yeo and her colleagues make sure that the band and corps setups are prepared and ready, as we have them leaving for one graduation, another group coming in to set up about at the same time. They're there every step of the way, make sure that all of that's ready to go. Our community relations department, of course, helped to make sure that they took the pictures, they made sure the video streamed okay, they made sure sound was okay, they made sure families could watch at home, because we recognize that not all our families are able to be here for those events. And then also making sure that it's up there for prosperity, so I know that families can go back and look at some of the speeches that they wanted to re-watch or see their student cross that stage again. So that, you know, I thank them for the work that they do, because we certainly couldn't do it without them. We had over 90 central office staff who volunteered their time during that week and a half to make sure that our families and our students feel support during graduations. I personally always, as much as I find graduation time to be slightly stressful in terms of helping making sure that all our students prepare, our principals are prepared, and our ceremonies are prepared, it is also such a joyous time to see these students truly celebrate. And you could see it, I hopefully you guys all saw that, as they crossed the stage, the joy in their faces as they held the diplomas up or as they got a picture taken. Many of our schools gave out the flowers, so that way they could go thank someone who helped them in this journey. That really, for me, is the reason why each and every one of us are here every day, kind of doing heart and soul work for our students in graduations. I know it helps me remember what I do, and I hopefully that struck all of you guys also. But more importantly, I just want to make sure I thank everybody who was involved with graduations. It truly is an event that couldn't happen without everybody. So thank you guys so much.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Merriman, and all the team members that put together another flawless graduation. Very, very extra special. So, board members, any discussion or comments? Ms. Hudgens?
Thank you. I just want to echo what Ms. Cooker just said. You guys were incredible. You put together, it was seamless, flawless, everybody had everything together, and we knew exactly what we were doing. And those kids, the smiles on their faces said it all. And it's, I only had two, and I was exhausted, so I don't even know how y'all are still standing. So it's unbelievable, an incredible amount of work, and it was, it was so seamless and so fun. So, well done. Thank you so much.
Next, we have action items. Mr. Meister.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Murray, other members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to come here today and present to you Memo 95-25, Adoption of the School Board's FY26 Financial Plan and CIP. Taking you back a bit, in January, the superintendent introduced his proposed budget at that point in time. The school board held a number of work sessions, some of which were slightly delayed because of the snow. We held a number of community town halls, I think there were six in total, and eventually on February 27th, you guys approved a school board budget at that point in time. That fed into the county process, but at that time, there were many unknowns in the process, mostly on the funding side. Most notably, the final state budget was still in negotiations between the governor and the General Assembly. At that point in time, we opted to lean into the proposal that was on the table from the General Assembly at that time, and that reflected the revenue that was in your budget that you approved on the 27th. Turns out, when the dust settled and the General Assembly and governor finished their negotiations, that wound up being the correct decision, as the version of the budget that's presented to you today is nearly identical to what was approved at that February point in time, as the General Assembly education budget at least maintained consistency from what we said at the end of February through today. So what that means is the memo is relatively benign, is largely what you approved in February, with one notable exception, which is the inclusion of approximately $360,000 from Chesterfield County for support of additional telehealth services. So you will see that in this budget that's over and above what was in the budget you approved in February. Otherwise, this budget is identical to your budget, both on the operating side as well as on the CIP side. So as I prepare to request your adoption, a few key notes. The total plan you're about to approve totals just over $1 billion, $1,677 million and change, to be slightly more precise. This is approximately $43.2 million over and above the FY25 budget, where we're dedicating funding to support the 3% raise, additional staffing for special education, English language learners, as well as other, quite frankly, needs around the district to combat things like inflation and what have you. Also embedded in this memo is the five-year CIP, which includes over $600 million, to include funding for several new schools and replacement schools, as Josh talked to you a little bit about this afternoon, as well as funding for major maintenance and Chromebook leases. So with all that said, I want to end by thanking, first and foremost, my staff for their support to get us to this point, also to thank the leaders across the district for all of their input. Thank you to the school board for your engagement throughout this process. So with all that, I will present to you Memo 95-25 for your thoughts, considerations this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Meister. Board members, may I have a motion to approve Memo Number 095-25 as presented? So moved. Is there a second? Second. Board members, is there any discussion? Mr. Pronto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, thank you. What you do, the hours that you put into this, your staff, you mentioned, you covered it all. I think for everyone that had a hand in this, there was some concern, absolutely, but thankfully it ended in our favor, to where we didn't have to make some very difficult decisions and end up adding, actually, you know, some mental health opportunities in there as well. So that's always a benefit. And just want to, again, express my gratitude for what you guys do on a daily basis. And I said the same thing to Sean Smith, I think, last year, about building a road from here to the Capitol and back again, as he advocates for us. And I think we could maybe, if, I don't know if there's any funding for you to build a similar road, right? Because the endless hours and nights that you have spent here in your office, making sure all this works, does not go unnoticed. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'll definitely look into that road.
There has been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll on the motion?
Todd Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Cooker?
Aye. The memo is approved. Next, we have Memo Number 096-25 from Mr. Thuma.
Evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Murray. I'm here to ask for approval of Memorandum 09625, which is the Award of Contracts for Building Commissioning Services. This, there was 11 proposals, five were shortlisted, and four were selected. Facilities Dynamics, RMF Engineering, Smart Building Strategies, and Bureau Veritas. This kind, this award has no monetary value and will be used whenever we go to do designs of new schools and the retrofit of building systems within the schools to make sure that we, they meet current building codes.
Thank you, Mr. Thuma. Board members, may I have a motion to approve Memo Number 096-25 as presented? So moved. Is there a second? Second. Board members, is there any discussion? There has been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Todd Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Cooker?
Aye. The memo is approved. Next, we have Memo Number 096-25 from Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. As you recall, this, this policy packet comes before you this time of year. It's not felt regard to transparency in that these are required by law to be in place by July 1. So significant packet, I will read through them to get them on the records, if you bear with me, till we get to that point. Staff recommends revisions to the following policies. Number one, revisions to Policy 1082, Electronic Participation in School Meetings from Remote Locations. Policy revised reflect requirement of annual adoption added to the Virginia Code 2.2-3708.3 by House Bill 894 and Senate Bill 734. Number two, revisions to Policy 1210, Adoption Regulations, reviewed with no changes. Number three, revisions to Policy 3021, Evaluation of the Division and its Instructional Programs Relating to Student Achievement. Revisions better reflect current process. Number four, revisions to Policy 3130, Safe Schools. Policy updated reflect amendments to Virginia Code 22.1-279.8 by House Bill 2051 and House Bill 2640 and Senate Bill 1380. Additions to Virginia Code 22.1-271.9 by House Bill 1695 and Senate Bill 817, and 22.1-274.7 by House Bill 1700, and 22.1-206.01 and 22.1-274.41 by House Bill 732 and Senate Bill 726. And Policy and Legal References updated reflect the addition of Virginia Code 22.1-271.9 by House Bill 1695 and Senate Bill 817, and 22.1-274.7 by House Bill 1700. Number five, revisions to Policy 3131, Threat Assessment Teams. Policy and Legal References updated reflect amendments of Virginia Code 22.1-79.4 by House Bill 2679. Number six, revisions to Policy 3150, Public Charter Schools. Policy updated. Number seven, revisions to Policy 3169, Notification of Learning Objectives. Policy and Legal References updated reflect amendments of Virginia Code 22.1-217.2 by House Bill 1805. And additions of Virginia Code 22.1-215.3 by House Bill 1892, and 22.1-217.4 by House Bill 2219, and Senate Bill 1034, and 22.1-274.7 by House Bill 1806. Number eight, revisions to Policy 3173, Mediation Recovery Program, reviewed with no changes. Number nine, revisions to Policy 4010-R, State Interested in Conduct. Policy updated reflect changes to the cell phone guidance per House Bill 1961 and cyber bullying per Senate Bill 908. Number 10, revisions to Policy 4021, Home Instruction. Policy updated. Number 11, revisions to Policy 4041, Transfer by Student Victims of Crime. Policy updated. Number 12, policies, revisions to Policy 4100, Student Records. Policy and Legal References updated reflect amendments of Virginia Code 22.1-4.1 by House Bill 2013, and addition of Virginia Code 22.1-288.3 by House Bill 2226. Revisions to Policy 4135, Management of Students who Sustain a Concussion, reviewed with no changes. Number 14, revisions to Policy 4137, Student Athlete, Sudden Cardiac Arrests, reviewed with no changes. Number 15, new policy, 4139, Notification of School Connected Student Overdose. Policy to reflect amendments of Virginia Code 22.1-272.1:1 by House Bill 2774 and Senate Bill 1240. Number 16, revisions to Policy 4150, Physical Restriction and Seclusion of Students, reviewed with no changes. Number 17, revisions to Policy 570, Employee Selection. Revisions reflect time between school boards' June and August meetings. Number 18, revisions to Policy 5120, Substitute Teachers. Policy and Legal References updated reflect amendments of Virginia Code 22.1-302 by House Bill 2201 and Senate Bill 1230. Number 19, revisions to Policy 5169, Policy Professional Staff. Policy updated reflect amendments of Virginia Code 22.1-298.1 by House Bill 632 and Senate Bill 352 and Senate Bill 142. Number 20, revisions to Policy 5191, Professional Staff Development. Policy updated reflect amendments of Virginia Code 22.1-298.8 by House Bill 1936 and 22.1-253.13: 5 by Senate Bill 1293 and House Bill 1089 and Senate Bill 220. Number 21, revisions to Policy 5380-R, Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace. Policy updated. Number 22, revisions to Policy 5460, Effect of Criminal Conviction or Found and Complaint of Child Abuse or Neglect. Policy updated reflect amendments of Virginia Code 22.1-296.1 by House Bill 1924. Number 23, revisions to Policy 6013, Commercial Promotional and Corporate Sponsorships and Partnerships. Policy revised reflect amendments of Virginia Code 22.1-296.1 by House Bill 1924. Number 24, revisions to Policy 6050-R, Request for Public Records. Policy updated reflect amendments of Virginia Code 2.2-3704.2 by House Bill 2152. Number 25, revisions to Policy 7031, School Service Provider's Use of Student Personal Information. Policy updated reflect amendments of Virginia Code 22.1-289.01 by Senate Bill 1486. Number 26, revisions to Policy 7130-R, Process for Pursuing Financial Grants. Revisions better reflect current process and change of position and title. Number 27, revisions to Policy 7230-Acceptable Use, the CCPS Net. Legal reference is updated. And number 28, revisions to Policy 7230-R, Acceptable Use, the CCPS Net. Legal reference is updated. Score Policy 1200 provides that, "If circumstances warrant immediate action or proposed policy regulation, the school may suspend its rules and bring the policy regulation up for immediate adoption following the first reading," end quote. Therefore, it's recommended that the school board suspend its regular rules of policy adoption by waiving a second reading of the policy contained in this memorandum and approve following the first reading. Proposed changes have been reviewed by school board attorney. If approved, the revision will become effective immediately. Madam Chair, you have two recommended actions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board members, may I have a motion for the board to suspend its rules and waive second reading? So moved. Is there a second? Second. Board members, is there any discussion? There has been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Todd Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Cooker?
Aye. The motion carries. Board members, may I have a motion to adopt the policies to become effective immediately? So moved. Is there a second? Second. Board members, is there any discussion? There has been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Todd Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Cooker?
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we have items for board review. Madam Clerk, would you please read the items for this evening?
Madam Chair, tonight's agenda includes the following items for board review. Number one, Magisterial District Improvement Funds, FY 2025. Number two, FY 2025, April Expenditures versus Appropriations. Number three, Budget Change Request Summary Across Categories, April 2025. Number four, Memo Number 098-25, Projected Financial Summary of Participants Entering the Supplemental Retirement Program, SRP. Number five, Gifted Education Advisory Committee Annual Report for 2024-25. Number six, Board Committee Reports. And number seven, Pre-K Update, April 2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have this evening's superintendent's remarks. Dr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items to share out this evening. Foremost, I want to thank the staff at Woolridge Elementary School. There was an unfortunate interaction there last week, and the principal, as well as the PE teacher, and our new school security officer that we have implemented at the elementary schools intervened appropriately and accordingly and restored campus calm back
Dot Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Cooker?
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we have items for board review. Madam Clerk, would you please read the items for this evening?
Madam Chair, tonight's agenda includes the following items for board review. Number one, Magisterial District Improvement Funds, FY 2025. Number two, FY 2025, April Expenditures vs. Appropriations. Number three, Budget Change Request Summary Across Categories, April 2025. Number four, Memo Number 098-25, Projected Financial Summary of Participants Entering the Supplemental Retirement Program, SRP. Number five, Gifted Education Advisory Committee Annual Report for 2024-25. Number six, Board Committee Reports. And number seven, Pre-K Update, April 2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have this evening's superintendent's remarks. Dr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items to share out this evening. Foremost, I want to thank the staff at Woolridge Elementary School. There was an unfortunate interaction there last week, and the principal, as well as the PE teacher and our new school security officer that we have implemented at the elementary schools intervened appropriately and accordingly and restored campus calm back to the way that it should be. So I just wanted to publicly thank those three individuals, but also everybody else who contributed in that matter. Secondly, we are still, although our kids are home, competing in VHSL state tournaments in many of our schools across all, I believe, most of, if not, our magisterial districts are competing in semifinal play, some of them this evening. So we wish them well in their pursuit of bringing back more hardware this year to Chesterfield County Public Schools. And then lastly, I just wanted to extend my gratitude to this board once more as we close the door on this school year. I want to thank you for putting your trust in me this year to lead this division. So thank you, thank you. But also, I think it was Josh who mentioned during his comments, and very appropriately, that our success is largely built around the cast that supports us. So to the cabinet that does the deep, meaningful work each and every day and supports me and has allowed me to grow into this position, I just want to thank Lisa and Sharon and Kim and Sean and Ernie and Bob and Josh and John Phillips and Wendell Roberts for their contributions. Because we tackled a great deal this year. Some of the small ones, and not an extensive list, we redistricted. We passed the $1 billion budget. We wrestled with inclement weather like we haven't in several years. We performed several ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings and still have many ongoing construction projects. Oh, and I totally spaced on Monique. I'm totally sorry, Monique. Yeah. You did, but I still claim you as one of my top hires of all time. Dr. Booth, our chief of schools, I'll give her an extra shout-out. We have successfully evaluated weapons detection and look forward to unveiling that in the fall, as well as other security enhancements that we completed this year with camera systems and school security officers at all of our schools and vestibule completion. We implemented new standards and pathways in our curriculum and instruction, all culminating with 11 beautiful graduations over the last two weeks. And I know Belinda came up and gave her thanks to everybody who contributed, but there was one person that she didn't thank, because it would have been weird, and that's herself. So thank you to Dr. Merriman for her efforts and her support of all of our high schools. But most importantly, we learned, we applied, and we contributed in impactful and meaningful ways this year, and that is because of our phenomenal staff, those in the trenches each and every day. So my hat's off to the ones that make the magic happen, and I look forward to supporting them again next year, but not before each of them and including our students enjoy resting, relaxed, full, summer filled with whatever brings them the most joy. Finally, I just want to thank the wonderful sheriff's deputies who support us each board meeting. It's been wonderful getting to know you guys this year. Thank you for walking me to my truck every night, even though my wife thinks that that's a bit weird for a grown man to have a personal escort to his truck. But thank you, gentlemen, for what you do. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Next, we have announcements, communications, and school board comments. School board members, are there any announcements or comments this evening? Mr. Pronto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I greatly appreciate the speaker this evening in regards to the Matoka High School diploma. I want to apologize for the diploma that your student received with the incorrect date. We don't point fingers, we take ownership. And I can tell you in conversation with Dr. Murray and senior leadership, that ownership is had. It's unfortunate, but thank you for coming out and speaking. Thank you for raising your family in the Matoka District. You know how good it is, because you came from that very same high school, and you understand the quality of education, because if not, you wouldn't have stayed. And you did. We owe that to your family and all families that attend all of our high schools, that we get it right. You're 100% accurate, and I just wanted to apologize for that error. Thank you for coming out and speaking tonight, and just greatly appreciate the opportunity to partner with you as we continue to move forward. So, Madam Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
The school board will hold a summer work session on Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, at 12:00 p.m. here in the public meeting room. It'll be followed by a business meeting at 6:30 p.m. If there's no further business, we need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Y'all really want to... Okay.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Cooker?
Aye. The motion carries. The June 3rd, 2025, school board business meeting is adjourned.